Here.
Danielle Youska?
Here.
J.D. Schrader?
Here.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. A couple little neat things to do tonight before we get into some of the normal stuff. Mr. Erdial, would you like to keep things off for us?
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of our community volunteers, particularly in his work with the school forest, Keith Linder, sitting back here. Keith has been a member of our school forest committee and has been working for the school district and managing our school forest for many years. His main job is really to manage our forest property as a forester. He just, and he recently retired from the DNR, so that part of his job will be complete, I guess. And so, he's done everything for us from, you know, creating management plans and then carrying all those management plans, setting up sales and that sort of thing with our forest. But that's not the only thing he does. He's been a very active member of our committee. He always makes his decisions based on what the committee has in mind as far as education. When we have an idea that we want to do educationally, he figures out a way to make the forest work for us, I guess you could say. And so, we have been very, very fortunate to have him on our committee, and we're going to be sorry to see him not be as active. He's more than welcome to stay with us as allowed to if he wants to. We know officially his DNR position is completed. And so, we'd like to present him tonight with this certificate, and then we also have a jacket that's being embroidered. It's just not ready yet, so we'll get it to him soon. So please help me and thank him for his service.
Thank you.
Keith, thank you. We do appreciate your service to the district. So, yep. Now, you two. How's it going? I don't know if I should make you report first or give you something first.
Do whatever you like.
What's the board want to know? Make a report?
Same time.
Well, before we do the formal stuff, tell us what's been going on.
Well, not too much in the last month, but we're really excited that the Tommy Awards that we informed you about last month, we had 11 nominations. We received one, one award, and it was for Outstanding Stage Management, which was awarded specifically to Pius Pacala and Mika Brown. They did do, if you went to the show, you would see how seamlessly, seamlessly everything went and how smooth the transitions were. So we're really proud of that because it is, it is our first year in the Tommy rotation, and so that was very exciting. Maybe a little less exciting were the AP tests that we had at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the month, excuse me. We offered seven AP tests total. And so, a couple kids this year, which was different, a few kids this year decided that they would take the same test and take it on their own, on their own time. So that was a little bit different. And then every one of the AP students, the U.S. History students that are enrolled in the class took the test as well, which was a pretty good turnout.
Nikki, what are the, your...
The Advanced Placement Test?
Yeah, I mean, what classes do we have?
Oh, we offer Environmental Science, Calculus, Literature and Composition, Language and Composition, U.S. History, Euro History, and then there were two independent tests. One was Chemistry and one was Psychology.
And some other news is that graduation is coming up. You know, I totally forgot about it. Graduation is going to be this 28th. We are going to be having the senior lock-in that same night. And before that happens, we're going to be having our senior picnic, which Nikki here organized. That will be at Jack Lake. And so that will be kind of the last two hurrahs that our class will have together. On other notes, other junior sophomores, freshmen are winding down in their classes and whatnot. Some things going on in sports. Tennis has three boys going on sectional, sectionals with our one-doubles really looking strong at going to state again for the second year and really doing well this year. And that all of our other sports are also winding down. And so, with that, I just kind of have a little personal note that comes from not only myself, but also from Nikki. You know, I walked in here and I saw my fifth grade elementary school teacher kind of standing right here, and it kind of took me aback because you kind of look at your past few years here in Antigo. As time is winding down, friends from others that have gone on and graduated have asked me what I thought of my experiences in high school. And, you know, I took a quick second, and I say quick because it really didn't take that long, to really realize that it was a very good opportunity here. And that's because of the work that we do in this office, and that's because of the work that our teachers put in day in and day out. And so, I just have a personal charge not only to you, but also to the community, because it also shows that each and every one of you standing or sitting here today, my second grade teacher is also here today. Oh, my goodness, they're all here.
It's all for you, Brennan.
It's emotions, okay? I'm sorry. My second and fifth grade teacher are also here today. I'm sorry. And so, just a personal charge to you is to never settle for less. Sitting here and listening to what goes on in all of these meetings means that you care. But you, we need to do more than that. There's only so much we can do here. There's plans going on right now that are much larger than a little time ago, that our voices, the people's voices, need to be heard. There's issues about cutting very special programs that are very near and dear to our community. There are plans to take money away from schools and to put it elsewhere into the hands of people that don't deserve it. There's plans to take money away from helping kids that need help with special needs or poor families. And so, please, please stay informed with budget proposals and other things, and please write to your senators, write to your congressmen, and do whatever you can, because you sitting right here shows that you care. And the more that we can do to make sure that our future is brighter, that would mean the world. Because the start of my career with the school board started off a few years ago when there were plans to disrupt the music department. And I got up here and I got very emotional, but I knew that I wanted to make my voice heard and that I wanted to make a difference. And so, standing here five years later, four years later, just means a lot to me, and I hope that it's not the same to you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the fun part.
I don't know, that was crazy, it's me.
You chop that?
Nah, I don't try to. But you two, I've, I've had the privilege, so is the board, of watching you kind of grow and mature over the years. And from your experience in the musicals and stuff, we've seen a side of you that a lot of people don't see every day, which has been kind of cool, too. But you guys work hard for this, and this is nice. So, what I've got tonight is a couple of certificates of appreciation. And we will be presenting to Nikita Deep and Brennan Brown for serving as student representative of the Board of Education and dated today, May 23rd, 2017. So, right over here, we're going to let her do her thing. Thank you. Brennan? Thank you. We'll put the rose between the thorns. Good, thanks, appreciate it. Please, Bill, please give another round of thanks. We'll see you on the stage on Sunday. Make sure you walk across. Oh, yeah. I knew, I knew you had, I had you there for a second. Well, thanks, guys, for the report, and that was your final one. So, also, when you bug out tonight, those little nameplates in front of you, leave the metal part. All righty, thank you. We will go on to the consent agenda, so we'd be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the minutes of the April 20th, 2017 Board of Education meeting, April 26th, 2017, May 8th, 2017, and May 15th, 2017, Special Board of Education meetings. Financial report for April 2017, checks number 7540 through 7663, in the amount of $407,203.73, ACH is number 161701282 through 161701430, in the amount of $1,260,659.13, and wire transfer of $9,633.97, for a total of $1,677,496.83.
Motion by Mrs., who's going to second by Mr. Merritt, any discussion, any questions?
Andy Mary? Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Paya?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, on to item three, citizens' delegations. Finals tomorrow, so thank you all. Good luck, good luck. Okay, we have two speakers signed up to discuss East fifth grade next year. Would you ask that you keep your comments to all five minutes, please? First up would be Mercy Quirrell.
Good evening. I am a parent of a current fourth grade student at East Elementary, and it's come to our attention that there's been talk of making one fifth grade class next year when there's currently two fourth grade classes. This class started in kindergarten as one gigantic class, and it, it was a rough year. It didn't, yeah, they struggled. They had two teachers in one room and space-wise, that's a lot of, a lot of little ones in one room. So they split it after that year, and we have had two classes all along. And now they're talking about putting them back together. I think they said that there would be 26 to 28 students possibly in that class next year, and I think that number can be a little misleading, because it sounds like, you know, you could have 26 very well-behaved students, and that might work just fine. This class has a lot of high-needs students. We talked to the school counselor. She said percentage-wise, she spends about a third of her time with just the fourth grade class. There is a lot of issues with, she says her top categories were friendship and peer issues and behavior concerns. Next year, she'd like to start a boys group to work on self-control, peer relations, and aggression. And she said the fourth grade's been her second-highest traffic group at East Elementary this year. We also talked to some of the special ed teachers. They say currently between the two classes, there are four students with sensory issues, so being in a very crowded room is going to be a problem for them. There's five receiving special ed services, five receiving extra reading accommodations, four with math accommodations, two that are in siblings that need to be separated, they're not supposed to be together, so that is an issue.
That's four total.
Four total. Two families, okay. Two families where the children have needed to be separated. There's four different levels of spelling instruction, four with anxiety and socialization issues, and six that have needed interventions for physical manifestations of anger that endangered other students. So we've had six that were violent, and they needed to deal with that. So, as someone who has a daughter in this class, sorry, safety is one of my biggest concerns for her. When you have that many students in a small space, and some of you saw the video that the fifth grade teacher provided, when you have that many students in a small space, if something goes wrong, there can be big issues. My son was in a fifth grade class there that had such issues. There were a number of times where they had to be removed from the room so that the student could be out with. That is very disruptive. My son went from getting excellence on his state tests to going down to proficient. To me, that's a pretty big problem. You know, that was a big hit to him that year. I felt like he went backwards that year. And his class was not as problematic as this class has been. You know, when you have to, when he comes home and tells me, "Mom, we all had to go in the hall so the policeman could remove a student from the class," you know, that's a problem. And I'm, I'm very worried that that will happen again next year. My son is very resilient, my daughter is not nearly as much so. So I'm very concerned about that. We have had a number of parents who have requested to know if this was going to happen because they may pull their students and go elsewhere if this happens, because there are so many of us that are concerned about this. So the space is a big issue, safety is a really big issue that we're concerned about. So we would like there to be two classes next year. I know there has been talk about having an aid. I'm not sure that that's going to be enough for this group, because there are a lot of them that have, have some really strong issues. So I don't know that an aid is enough. I think that we really need to have two separate classes. Even at two classes, there are times where it's a struggle. I know that, been told that some days that you can't separate everybody that needs to be separated, and that's what I'm into. So I would really strongly urge you to, you know, do a little more research into this if you need to, look at the situation, and please offer two classes next year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, Student Noel Marsh.
Clearly, we have the same issue, so we're talking about the same thing. We had some crossover. I'm also a parent of a fourth grader in that classroom. She's been there since kindergarten. My daughter's one of the kids with special needs. She has A P and Asperger's, and so she's one of those sensory kids, so if there was 28 kids there, I mean, she's distracted even in a small class, so it's really hard to imagine having so many more kids in that class. There's also two kids who are hearing impaired, and the noise level in there would get so loud that their hearing aids would pick up everything, it'd be hard for them to concentrate. Her teacher's here, Ms. Anderson. I spoke with a lot of people. I spoke with Ms. Anderson. I even spoke with the temp who's over at the fourth grade, and I told her that they were talking about doing this, and her eyes got wide, and she said, "Really?" She couldn't even believe, because she had worked with them back in the third grade. She said, "They're a handful." So not only does it being a big class, there's just so many special needs on top of it. It's one thing a big class, but all the special needs. And Ms. Anderson even admitted to me, she said, you know, "With all the stuff that we're dealing with, I feel really bad that I haven't been able to give your daughter as much one-on-one time as I would like to, because I'm too busy breaking this up and disciplining kids to spend time." I'm lucky enough that my daughter goes out, and goes with the special ed teacher with Ms. Adler a lot, but she does tend to get lost in the room, even with just 14 kids. So I just can't even imagine what's going to happen if we have 28 kids in there. And I don't know if you guys have, I don't think you've any had the power, I think this comes from the district, but anything that you can do to start making some noise. I called over there, and I was kind of told, "Well, we can't take a stance one way or the other," and it's what we kind of are by deciding to have it be all in one grade you're making this decision. So speaking to a lot of the teachers, like I said, they just, none of them can believe that this is going to happen. It does seem like, oh, it's just 28 kids, she's got 21 now? Yeah, 21 now.
Twenty-seven, eight-four.
Yeah. But the thing is, I mean, you can put 28 kittens in a room or 28 tigers in a room, you're going to have, you know, they're old cats, right? But you're going to have a whole different reaction, and we've got a lot of tigers this year. So whatever you guys can do, and if you can follow up and let us know what you're doing, it'd be appreciated so that we know that somebody's on this, and it's not just being, "Oh, that's what the budget is." We can't just look at what the numbers are. We have to look at what's best for our kids, and that's something I think is what the mission was. The statement that in partnership with the community, our mission is to provide a safe and positive educational climate. That would not be a safe and positive educational climate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, one of the things we try to do is follow up, and sometimes it's with phone calls. I can tell you guys, I will tell you that actually on Monday, we meant to talk about this issue and a similar issue at other schools. So it's not falling on deaf ears. I agree that it's not always a budgetary issue, but sometimes it is. So it, it's not, you know, completely, we've drawn a line on the sand. We're continuing to evaluate our salary budget, we're continuing to evaluate those needs and look into it, so please know that it's not, at this point, it is one teacher in there, but it is something we've continued to talk about.
Can I just real quick? You said it is a budgetary issue, but keep in mind that I know that if kids start pulling out of the school, you're going to start losing money. So, and I'm going to be probably one of those parents who do, because I just, my kid just can't handle that, so it is, keep in mind, too. If, "Oh, we need them, you know, we can't afford it, what can you afford a bunch of kids leaving the school, too?" So just keep that in mind, please.
Thank you.
Did I put my two sons in? I have only half the class this year, and I was just recognized for 25 years of the district, thank you very much. I have taught a class of 28 students that was a split third, fourth grade in the past. Six of those students were LD, three of those students were put in ED programming the very next year, and it was less of a challenge than I have had this year with the 14 and a half. So you can take that as you wish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, is an administrative, continuing to work here. So, thank you ladies for your attendance.
What is, what are the current amendments for like, or if you know, for the fourth grade at like Pleasant View in Spring Valley?
Twenty-one and nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and like at Crestwood?
Guys, this isn't on the agenda, so if we can just, I can send out the information, we can put it on a future agenda.
Sorry, I wasn't going to bring it up.
We can't give it too much more.
You started talking about it. I wasn't going to talk about it.
Just responding to...
So you can send us the latest enrollment numbers?
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
There is another issue with the hearing aids. They do actually experience pain if they get used to it.
And I was at Crestwood today, and there were 49 kids, and consolidated the fourth and fifth grades in one class, and they were quieter than one class at East. So, just move forward.
Okay, thank you. But we do need to move forward. We've already had the student representative report, kind of snuck that in a little early, so we left that, I'm sorry. New business, Committee on Instruction.
Okay. Our meeting was called to order on Thursday, Tuesday, May 2nd. Committee members present, Jeanie Long, Danielle Youska, J.D. Schrader, other board members present, Andy Mary, Mike Boldy, Andy Hyde, Patrick McKenna, Administrator present, Cindy Fisher. Cindy Fisher and Tom Zanzo shared information regarding professional development with the staff. There'll be a total of five in-service days of the 2017-18 school year, and that there are collaborative teams of literacy studies as well as math, social studies, and science. Kelly Durlin and Kelly Levick talked about the, what is it, the presentation information on, information on the academic and career planning, which is student-driven, adult-supported process, and where students create and cultivate their own unique post-secondary goals. They share information on grade levels, objectives, and career cruising and activities. Tom Zanzo presented us information regarding the new graduation requirement to students' prepare, a student portfolio. The 15-minute presentation will be scheduled with parents, staff members, and a local community member. Each presentation will assure parents and the community that all graduates have a post-secondary plan. Some elements of the presentation may include an education plan, career and life goals, resume, and evidence of learning. Policy 345.6 graduation requirements was discussed and will be brought to the 523 board meeting. J.D. Schrader suggested that the board form a book study group. Cindy Fisher shared the books that the district staff and administrations are currently following, and there was a discussion on that. June 6th, 2017 will be our next meeting, and the meeting was adjourned at 9:00 P.M.
Any questions with Jeanie on committee minutes? Looking for motion approved. I move the board approve the Committee on Instruction meeting minutes dated May 2nd, 2017. Second. Motion on the second, by a motion by Mr. Paya, second by Mr. Mary. All those who favor? Aye. Will suppose. Answer approved.
I'll read the minutes.
There was no operations committee, they made. Easy, God, then. It was pretty simple. We took a month off, man. Committee assignments for next year. I did send a note out to each of them, hopefully got a little bit of feedback after much deliberation. Committee on Instruction for the 2017-2018 year. I will tell you this, committee structure as it was last year with a couple of exceptions is pretty much intact. Jeanie, Danielle, and Jeanie will be on the Instruction Committee along with Dr. Deep, and I would like Dr. Deep to chair.
Oh, wait. Does, I know that you can assign it, but I think actually, chairing of the committees can be decided by the committees, and there's nothing in the policy that would suggest that you should do.
Nope, there isn't. This is just my recommendation for the next meeting, that'll be the chair, and if the committee decides to do something different at that time.
What about just allowing the committee to make that decision?
We do need somebody in place to start the committee meeting, so having a chair would be probably a good idea.
Well, as per temp, you'll be there, you could probably do that.
We can see how it goes.
So, I just...
Well, okay, if, if that's the way the board would like it, I will do it that way.
We, only because we did that before that way.
Yeah, and that's fine, but I'm just, up to the board. Okay? Then that's what we'll do at the next committee meeting. I will chair it and allow the committee to pick their chairperson. Operations will be Andy, Jessica, Danny, and Patrick. So those will be your assignments?
We were gonna, I'm sorry, I was just...
For Andy, Jessica, Danny, and Patrick on operations. Okay?
Good as a chair. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that takes care of that under new business now. Item D, budget updating. Yep. I've got two documents there for the board, and the first one is one that we've used in the past for closing up fiscal year. And it really just goes in the detail of what's going on in the business office of June, July. You know, primarily what we're going to be doing is, up on the top, I have there is a coming-on accrual basis. Most businesses operate on a cash basis, so when you, you receive the revenues and incur the expense, you do like a month-end close. We're doing a year-end close, and we're associating all the revenues that we receive for a school year in the school year. And typically, like last year, we actually got revenues in July that were received in for the last school year. And likewise, we pay teachers through August, the majority of our staff. We put those expenses in payables that are assigned to the current school year. So it's, it's a little different than what a private sector would. So we talked about, I talked a little bit about that in bullet number one and number two. We're also, we've given me the latitude with the OPEB obligation at a prior meeting, I think that was back in March. And so we have some discretion there in Fund 73 to look at whether or not we have excess funds and whether we can contribute to that OPEB liability that we have occurring out there. Special ed is another area that's highly regulated with federal programs, and we have to do something called maintenance of effort. And what that really means is on a local basis, we have to support special education at, we have to maintain our level of support. And we're reviewing our expenditures for special ed, and we're reviewing expenditures through the IDEA funds that come from the federal government, and we have to maintain that level of support. And what, what the statute stays, if, on the FTE basis, student basis, or on an expenditure basis, is if we, in one single year, if we expend for, whether it's teacher salaries or purchases that we make, we have to maintain that level in preceding years. So we're very careful on how we look at special education, and we try to maintain that Fund 27 transfer that we make every year, so that we don't... that Fund 27 transfer that we make every year so that we don't, we allocate it appropriately. We look at grad funding so that we maximize our able special education expenditures. So we're really reviewing that portion of the budget. And at some point, if we've, let's say, over expended in Fund 27, we'll reallocate those expenditures back to Fund 10. We also, in bullet five, we're looking at, after the board meeting in June, we have an opportunity, we possibly have about a week's worth of expenditures that need, we need to get checks cut so that we have a clean year end. So we will be sending out those, it's letting you know that we're going to be sending out checks that may not have board approval because it's a year end and we're trying to get those expenses into the year. They have to clear prior to our, during our audit, so we'll get those expenditures paid for and out, and hopefully they'll clear the bank and prior to the audit, so we can assign them appropriately to the correct school year. And then finally, on the document I'm showing down there, that our audit is scheduled for the week of July 31st, and we'll have auditors here for five days. They're doing a preliminary audit at the end of June. So that's in a nutshell what we'll be doing in the business office in May, June, and July. The other document is one I should have clarified with Brian, and you've seen this one before. Right now, we have discussion and information as the agenda item. We know right now our budget is in flux, and I don't know if you've been following, I heard, I read a statement on the Milwaukee Journal today that the governor's threatening to kind of ax the whole budget process if legislature doesn't get on board. So we're really in flux with what's going to happen at the state level. I believe President Trump was going to be releasing his budget sometime this week in Congress. He's talking about slashing education and primarily he's talking about eliminating Title II. We use Title II federal dollars for both class size reduction and professional development. So that will have a significant impact on us if he doesn't. If you listen to some of the politicians, almost every congressional district receives Title II dollars, so that's going to be one that'll be difficult for a lot of lawmakers to get behind. So there's just a lot of influx. So this draft that I have, we know the information on it, it's our best guess, but in all likelihood, the information I'm providing is probably wrong because we don't know what our revenues are going to be. This is a sheet that we've used for a couple of months on coming up to balance the budget based on our forecast, and tonight I'm suggesting that we look at item number five to reuse capital equipment and purchase services to balance the budget. And as we've projected right now, we're looking for $70,000. That budget item is $212,000, and I'm recommending that we reduce our forecasted budget in that area by $70,000 to balance. And why this is important is we're going to be developing next year's budget based on these assumptions. So in June, I hope to present a preliminary budget based on these numbers, and then from there at the budget hearing in August, you know, if the assumptions haven't changed too much, we'll be presenting that document at that time. And Brian, since it's not an agenda item, I'm okay if we go ahead and move this forward in June.
We can take action on new business items.
Okay.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve.
Using the capital equipment.
Approve reducing the capital equipment and textbook adoption. Textbook adoption, professional development fund by $70,000.
So what does that mean?
Things we put in, any capital equipment desks, those sort of things. Quite frankly, this year, we actually, our requests on those sorts of items have gone down a little bit because we put a lot of money into them the past few years. Professional development is typically if we're bringing in outside speakers, those sorts of things. We do have a little bit planned for next year, but not where we spent the past few. Textbook adoption is exactly what it sounds like, adopting new curriculum materials, and every year we are doing those, those sorts of things, so.
Brian, if I could comment, that's the three accounts that Brian's talking about. Typically, we use, because we don't, you know, we're really tied to student enrollment on our revenue stream from the revenue limit formula, and those three accounts are usually accounts where in the past we've looked at those and said, we don't know where the state budget is, we're going to freeze that until we get the October 15th aid certification, and at that time, we'll balance the budget for those three areas and release those funds to staff. So it's tip, those are, it's a very typical area.
Two should be the ones we use to kind of balance things, and then in October it may shift. What would you have to cut for us to be able to get another teacher at East?
Well, and why I was a little hesitant, we talked about this on Monday, and right now, we've got a number of open positions, and people don't typically declare benefits until they come here in August, they make that decision of whether they're going to take insurance, stay on the, maybe stay on the parents. We just need a little more time and hire more people and just solidify that before I be willing to say what we have available.
So J.D., that's why I referenced our salary schedule. We still have some hires, and as things flesh out, we may look at it and say, we've got room to hire extra staff members, or, you know, we're already, it all depends on who you hire to ask us what you're going to hire. It depends, if you hire a new grad, that's one thing. If you hire a teacher with 20 years' experience, it's different. And we've been lucky this year that our hires have been coming in. We've got a lot of new grads, and I say lucky, they're, you know, we think they're very good candidates. There is an advantage to having experienced teachers, obviously. But as you know as well, the teaching, as the summer goes on, and if past years tells anything, the longer we move along here, the harder it is to find good candidates. So it varies, you know, set number that a teacher proposed to.
So we'll be discussing that with more clarity for accepting in, in June?
Like a budgetary change?
We'll have another month behind this, so.
Every month, the picture will have a little clearer.
At what point, if we said we don't want to make this Crestwood and take that out of fund down, what's the latest point we would do that?
At the preliminary, like next month, when I, when I present the very, very preliminary budget, I'll need to know what to put on the budget hearing. You know, what we need, what we need, what information are you looking for? You know, what assumptions are we going to build the budget on?
And from past experience, you usually ask us like this or this, I mean, you're usually.
Well, like last year in June, we decided to do the $500,000 project, and we developed a budget around that number.
Exactly.
I like motion that we reduce the budget, reducing it by $70,000, right? And capital equipment and textbook adoption and professional development.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from this meeting, second from Dr. McKenna. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing that, five phone call.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Bolding?
Yes.
Gives you what you need, Kenna?
Yep.
All right. Onto item six, board action. First reading of multiple policies. Do you have any lightness? I can enlighten you on some, and I'll ask Tim or Tom and Cindy to help me with others. Okay. The policies related to food service are, essentially, we've told you before that we have to have a policy in place by July 1st regarding collection of overdue food service accounts. So basically, all we've done here is put into policy what we discussed, boy, I think it was back in October or November, kind of the criteria we set in place regarding overdue food service accounts. So it was just by July, it had to be an official policy, so we're looking for your approval on that. Again, nothing changed from the criteria you asked us to follow back then. Greg, no questions on that one, go ahead.
I was just curious, what's the, is there a accounting distinction between delinquent debt and then bad debt, and is that, is that part of those accounting sort of?
Well, and Patrick, when you look at the rule, you know, one of the things that I want us, the National Lunch Program does not want federal dollars to be used to support the debt, the bad debt that is collected. So in the policy, I'm suggesting that we review that by the end of the school year and decide what to do with that debt. If we aren't going to go after it in collections, we need to, we need to make a Fund 10 transfer. So out of the general fund, we would make the food service program whole, and rather than let that debt accumulate, I think we should address it on an annual basis so that, you know, we're getting direction from parents on what they want to do, and we're not just letting it hang over them.
763R, I was slightly confused where it had the stars right on the first page, and it said these lunch rules apply to students with paid and reduced lunch accounts. I didn't know if that meant to the paragraph immediately below it or to the whole document, or I didn't know what these was referring to.
The checkmark rules.
Because paid and reduced accounts, there would be, a free, a free account isn't going to be accumulating those debts, so.
Okay, I didn't know if it was like the distinction, like, like when you went and you signed up for free, but you already had some existing debt. I didn't know if that, you like, that other debt would be sitting there, but now you'd be able to continue purchasing.
The debt remains, but they can't continue purchasing regular meals because they do qualify through, through National, the National Food Service Program for free lunch, but the debt does remain.
So it's a cheese sandwich and a McDonald's thing, no? And a bowl of vegetables. Is that something, is that not required?
It's not required, no.
Yeah, it's not reimbursable meal, so it's coming right out of their operating costs. So they're not, they're not getting, the parent, the child isn't getting charged for it, and we can't claim it as a lunch.
When we had had this conversation before, we talked about the $20 limit, and we'd said, you know, if families had, you know, three kids or four kids, that, that there was kind of a late time sometimes with like getting the check, you know, like where people courier to pick up checks, getting it through the system and that. And we, we, I mean, I, maybe I misremembered, but I thought that the conversation was that $20 seems like a little close on that, and we thought that maybe a little bit higher amount, but, but maybe people remember that differently.
I think it was $10?
Was it $10 before?
We were talking $15, and you asked us to bump it to $20.
Is that what we did? Okay, good, I just couldn't, and that seems good.
Yep, no, we did have that discussion, and I think that's where we came with $20.
Go ahead.
On 763, it looks like the 20, we got a comma instead of a period.
I know.
Yeah, because that, that was going to be fixed.
Yeah, I just.
763, where is it at? So it's a management. Okay, thank you.
Then your next paragraph, Brian, consulting with district financial administrators as needed, thus shall, I assume somebody's going to be in front of the shell, the district or.
Thank you. Just a couple little grammatical things that will be corrected.
We're like a group of peer reviewers, right? That's what.
Someone's got.
Publicly, unfortunately.
So, okay, we can do all these.
Sure can. Graduation requirements, Tom, can you clarify some of the changes in there?
The, I don't know if I can pull it up, but I have the version I submitted. We are, okay. Changes that are, were recommended included increasing the math and science credits to be in line with the state requirements that were adjusted a few years ago, so three math, three science credits. We also wanted to adjust the senior portfolio requirement where, starting next year, every senior will be presenting a graduation post-secondary portfolio and wanted to include that as part of, as part of the graduation requirement, or as a pass fail on the transcript. And those will be scheduled in mid-April with the opportunity for students to re-present if they didn't meet the criteria the first time. And we also made adjustments with the ability for some middle school courses to be counted as high school credits.
Would you have to do more of that if we moved to eighth grade, middle school, or to the high school?
I think what we would do is just accelerate students into a high school course.
341-2 is education for employment. This is related, I believe, to our academic and career planning. You can look it over if you've got questions. I think Kelly Durlin's probably the best person to direct those to. Basically, we need to have a policy in place related to our academic and career planning plan, which Kelly presented at our instructional committee. Well, in the edits, there's anything saying that, that needs to be changed? Yep, so we can bring back next month for separating. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Good deal. Very good. Let's move on to second. Let's have a motion first before we do anything more.
I move the board approve the policy policies as presented. 342.1 Programs for Children with Disabilities, 342.1 are procedures and programs for children with disabilities, 342.11 Child Find Activities, 342.12 Assistive Technology for Students with Special Needs.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Ms. Youska, a second from Mr. Pyatt. Discussion on.
I believe Heidi went through these with you to the instructional, at two instructional committee meetings ago, basically just making sure they're up to date in compliance with changes in state statute, so some minor changes to each policy.
Anyone with any questions?
Is the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, Madawah Educational Agency policies and procedures really long?
What are you looking at?
I don't know, I pulled it out of one of the policies. Sorry, just stepping into my work documents, so you can just ignore me.
Could be.
It just, it said it was, had all the special education regulations, it's a federal estate, and it was integrated into our policy 342.1.
Oh, I see what you're looking at.
It's the rule. I just thought, that must be really long.
What's going to have is all the policies related to special education, just DPI, WASB provide us with sample policies that we use as the basis for our policies.
So you can't just take that document and kind of make it policy?
You've got to do some editing because there's always those things that apply to your district that are unique, but those are, I mean, that's what we use for the basis. For example, the food service policy was the first time we ever writing that policy, so I went to WASB's website, pulled their sample policy, and then we started tweaking it based on our district. Okay, any other questions on these policies?
Which one had the concept of the universal design program? I was curious what that was too. It said this means to the greatest extent possible district to recognize and accommodate all learners' individual differences. I just thought that was interesting.
Probably 342.1.
I was trying to keep track of where I pulled that out of. It's possible it's the next one, it might be in C. It's possible it's the next one. It might be in C.
It would be the 342.12. Down at the bottom, is that what you're talking about, JD?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, down at the bottom there. I just thought that was.
You're going to find school there's a, there's a concept of universal design for learning?
Yeah.
Referring to?
Yeah.
If you want more information on universal design, soon your Heidi can provide that.
JD, I think what they're talking about here is that as much as possible, we want special education children to be mainstream with their classmates so that that universal exposure to information is there for everyone and then with special education teachers help support them understanding and expressing what they know about that concept in different ways so that differentiation happens not only in the classroom but outside the classroom as well.
Okay. So something that goes back to JD, the, the work we've been doing on the guaranteed curriculum. Every student should get, and then students with special needs get something in addition to that. They don't just get a separate curriculum. Any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion on the board to approve these policies. So all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Just, again, these are just minor updates. Found some typos in old policies and we updated them to the new format. Our policy just says, I'm going to notify you when I make those changes. The content, none of the content in any of these policies was changed. Just reformatting and a few grammatical, mechanical errors that I found. Well, I should say Cindy found, I believe, in reviewing them. You can probably, she probably figured it out by now. I don't catch a lot of mechanical mistakes. Cindy catches those.
I got two more grammaticals on these.
Great.
Uh, 341.1.
Email them to me, otherwise I'll never remember.
Okay.
So just letting you know those were changed again. No, um, none of the content was changed. Adam D., Supplies for the 2017 and 2018 School Year. What can you, for motion, please?
I'm with the board approved expenditures for the acquisition of supplies for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second. Motion by Ms. Reed, second from Dr. McKenna. Um, discussion. I think this is just the normal stuff, Tim, that we're, so we can get stuff in place for next year. Sounds good. Any questions from anyone on yet? Bobby, let's do a roll call on this.
Danny Pius?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
JD Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Academic and Career Planning. The district needs to have a board-approved academic and career planning plan in place prior to the beginning of next school year. If you have any questions, Kelly and Kelly are here and they're going to be the best people to answer them, so they've put in a lot of work on this this year. Kelly Durline's headed it up, but the entire counseling department has worked really hard and in reviewing it, I feel that we're ahead of the game in terms of moving forward. So kudos to them on the work they've done.
Kind of feel like we should make them answer our questions since they came here. But I don't have it. Nice of you guys to come.
I want to know more about the self-awarement assessments.
Pick me on this question.
Um, the ECP. Page two.
Want a question?
Can you elaborate on the taking self-awareness assessments?
Self-awareness?
These self-awareness assessments are related to interest inventories. They, in high school, they look at skills they maybe possess that would transfer into different career choices as well. We look at learning styles that students have starting already in sixth grade and then moving forward. They'll review those as they go through high school.
Kind of if you could, just for the board members who may not have been at the instructional committee meeting, just explain the, the idea behind the shift in, I guess, counseling models and school counseling models related to career planning.
It's really looking at the student center rather than helping them be able to focus on their careers all the way through from elementary and build on that and build on what their skills are, what that might lend them to, hopefully so that they don't end up in college and make different career choices. It leads them to possibly a technical college apprenticeships. It's much more joined with the community and looking at our community needs for employees and then looking at what, what skill sets our students could fill. Ties very closely into that career and technical education piece as well. We use career cruising as our main for, as our main tool, software tool for students to do a lot of assessments. The graduation requirement that Mr. Zanzo talked about as far as the portfolio will be created using that tool through career cruising for students as well.
It was a very good presentation. Thank you.
It was fun.
I think then we would be looking for motion to approve the district's ECP plan. Okay, motion by Ms. Murray, second by Ms. Long. Any additional discussion? Three, none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion, please. Consideration to form a book study group slash committee. Okay. Sounds good.
Well, we talked about it a little at the instructional meeting, whether A, we wanted to do it, and B, we would do it as a subset of the instructional committee, or C, whether it be its own ad hoc committee meeting mainly for the benefit of we wouldn't waste people's time who really didn't want to listen and, and they would have to be there for the instructional committee meeting and that might be easier for a teacher or a staff member who didn't want to sit through that whole meeting. So I don't know if anybody feels strongly about doing it or not doing it or how we do it.
Well, you know, I think it, you know, as long as there's flexibility and, and maybe, I think you had suggested maybe every two months, but maybe quarterly.
Yeah.
It'll make a little bit more sense. And, and I think as long as it's kind of based around, you know, you know, mix of, like, you know, things that are relevant to the, you know, the, I mean, very relevant things that teachers are reading here, I think that'd be really helpful for board members.
I think I, I wasn't at that meeting, but kind of expressed my opinion a little bit. I'm not opposed. I, I think one of the, the things that's coming out is, is being a great practice in education is what they're calling collective efficacy. That we all have the, the shared knowledge and know what we're doing.
Exactly.
I, I think if the board wants to move forward with something like this, we should focus on those books we're asking our teachers to read. Those sorts of things, one of the things our administrative team is doing is they're going to some leadership professional development over the summer and are reading a book called Coherence and I couldn't tell you who was by off the top of my head. Amy's going to pull it out of her bag.
Oh, I have a different one, sorry.
You know, I can recommend that, but I think the, the idea of, of a book study is that we're all on the same page. My biggest concern was that the board's going to be reading one thing and we're having our staff read something else and pretty soon we're zigzagging in a lot of different directions. And one of the things we have tried to do this year is start to focus in on a few things. We've really, hopefully I get some nods from this, but we've really overwhelmed our staff the last few years with a lot of different things. So we're still even trying to hone that in and I think if we can work collaboratively and work, you know, as an administrative team and a board on, here's the book we're asking our teachers to read, or here's the book our teachers did read, why don't we read that as a board and discuss it? I think it's a good practice. If you're starting to read every book you catch out there, I'm just afraid we're going to start to overwhelm our staff, overwhelm our administrative team and not everyone is a, is a is an aggressive reader as some of our board members are. And realistically, I think if you read too many different things, you can end up diluting the process of what your intent is. You're trying to focus in on something and project with an idea, but if you, like you said, if you're grabbing from fourteen different directions, you're not going to get the crux of really what you're looking for, I think. And my other recommendation would be piggybacking in some way off another committee. We already meet a lot of nights, especially compared, when you compare it to other districts we're meeting weekly. So if you're going to do it, maybe, you know, it doesn't have to be part of the instructional committee, but maybe it starts a half an hour before the instructional committee. It would ease, make things a little bit easier for us in posting those meetings and also, I think, save you guys from having to meet one more time during the month.
Seems reasonable.
I don't, I don't think its intent is to have the whole board on this committee.
No, whoever wants to be.
Yeah, I guess everyone missed the meeting, so I'm not clear on what the intent or goal of the committee would be or?
Well, a small part of the intent was you want to consider some new ideas to maybe like an eighty, twenty thing a week. Eighty percent of the books are things that you're already reading and like twenty percent is reading something every day.
And the nice thing about ad hoc is it doesn't have to just include board members. I think ad hoc committees, there's a lot of leeway to have. You know, I mean, you could have administrators, staff, you know.
Can we have a book study as an ad hoc meeting?
Adhocs are generally supposed to have a very specific purpose and then when their purpose is up.
To read a lot of books until the purpose is ever up.
To read a lot, I don't know, read books, I guess, is pretty general for an ad hoc committee.
I mean, there is the.
What if, what if you form a new ad hoc third quarter? You know, the purpose of reading a book is just to develop more information on poverty in the year ago or coherence or whatever.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like a more focused intent on it, I guess. I mean, we can get pretty broad, like if we're going to buy education, like is that there's like a million books out there?
You know, you, you could do a book study and it doesn't have to be a committee. But what you would need to do is when there's going to be a quorum of board members present, you need to let Bobby know so it can be posted and she would post it along the lines. I'd have to talk with the school attorney in terms of how he would want it posted. In terms of the board will meet to discuss. Yeah. Eric Jensen's Book on Poverty. I'd have to talk to Kevin about how he'd like those, how specifically we have to give. But it doesn't necessarily have to be a committee because we're, we're not necessarily saying this is going to directly be referring things to the board meeting. It's going to inform us, which we may then discuss at a committee meeting later. For board.
Put the table and contents right in the newspaper, you notice?
Possibly, yeah. So I, I guess if you're interested in what we afford with it, if you're comfortable waiting to discuss this at next month's meeting, I can get more clarification from Kevin on how we should post it and how it should look. And if it does need to be an ad hoc committee, my feeling is it doesn't have to be a formal committee. It's just when, when you are planning to meet to discuss, we need to know and post it. It needs to be held in a public place so the public can attend and listen to the discussion because the quorum of the board would be present. Similar to the way we posted the public hearings. A quorum of the board will be present. At that one, we said no, no district business will be discussed.
Is it, well, part of the reason that we talked about it here is, well, I already bought the book, but it's from Harvard Press and they don't make Kindle books and it's thirty dollars. And so I didn't know if that many board members were interested in paying for the book themselves, but they might be more interested if we bought it.
The school board does have a budget. Say that. There's not a lot of in your budget. Usually it goes to covering your conference fees. The school board does have its, a separate budget that Bobby and I manage. It's almost entirely for conference fees, moderate board meetings, those sorts of things.
Yeah.
This is, yeah, the water is pretty cheap, but conferences, I mean, you compare buying a book for ten people for that thirty bucks is three hundred and state conference for two people must be seven, eight hundred, I imagine.
But not everyone.
Not everybody wants a new book, just like, not everybody wants to go to state conference. But I think either one, if you're going to a conference or reading this book, ideally you would like to come back with an idea and say, this is something that we should look at for our district as opposed to, I can just say it's disappointing to me when people go to conferences and there's no feedback.
No, I think that's a.
Put, put out eight hundred bucks and.
I think we, I think we might need to find the right fit of a space to do that, whether it is conference meetings or reading a book. And I don't know that it fits into the ad hoc committee or a committee, but if Brian could talk to Legal and see how that might. I don't have a problem with paying for books, but I do think it is important if we are going to read this to have a space to discuss it.
Yeah, well, I just got one more question, Brian. When administration or teachers, if you decide you're all reading a book, do you do a discussion on that as a group? And would it be appropriate for board members to sit in on any of those discussions?
I don't think anyone would have a problem with inviting board members. Tom's probably done more book studies than, you know, he's been working through these for a while. Should be concerned with board members attending and listening and engaging in the conversation. So I think that's something we can certainly, you know, the administrative team is working through with Joe Schrader from OSA.
I think that you had recommended that book on all four areas. Start reading that. It's very good. Directly relates to what sales and, defining our purpose. I think that's a good.
Yeah. I mean, I remember a time when we were in the midst of trying to hash out like facility stuff, facility stuff. I remember, I remember you saying, Brian, that, like, you know, not everything is about facilities. And I think, you know, it's very true. I think it's good for the board to shift to ideas about curriculum and to, to have an interest in that and to, you know, because it really is the, you know, the funding, you know, outside, I mean, we need buildings, I guess, because it gets cold in the winter and hot in the summer and rains. But, but really that's the, you know, teachers and the curriculums that they're employing that like, you know, are really fundamental, you know, to the, the work of the district.
I agree a hundred percent as long as the board remains doing the work of school board members.
Absolutely.
Boring or not, hopefully you all read that book.
It's a great book.
I, I think the only thing that I would still caution as well, even meeting with the teachers, is the potential of having a board present and then having to take that meeting and post it.
Yes.
Well, that was, that was sort of my question. Is there a problem with doing it? I mean, are Tom or people at the high school going to be offended if this meeting got posted, somebody from the public shows up? In addition to.
I think my concern would be that your staff members probably aren't going to be as comfortable sharing their opinions. In some cases, they may not as it is, but I think it depends on who's there from the public. My opinion is if you want to do a book study, let me talk to Kevin about how we could post that and I, I can get back to you. I, I don't even know that a group of board members wanting to get together to discuss a book needs formal board action. We would just need to make sure if there's going to be a quorum present, you need to let Bobby know when you're doing it so we can post appropriately.
I would speculate that we probably need to at least know or, I think, a half or four long book, wouldn't we?
So what I'll do is I will get clarification for you and get back to you in this week's board memo. So what I'll do is I will get clarification for you and get back to you in this week's board memo.
Is it possible to just know what they're reading? So whether we discuss with them or not, we can follow along?
Yeah, absolutely, I'll send you, I'll send you the list that Cindy had brought, that they've already read. I'll send you what the administrative team's reading right now.
And if someone would have an interest in one of those, would a copy be made available, I assume?
Tantec Central Office, often we have leftover copies when we do orders, or you can borrow our copies, as long as you don't mark them up, JB.
I don't share books.
So, is there, is it appropriate to, if, so you'll get back to us in June, and then we can pick a time in June to kind of set up the first one?
Frank, is June your official last, what's your last meeting?
June thirtieth, so I'll let you guys know June twenty-ninth.
That's right.
Frank, you said you wanna cover the book on, you think you're pushing this off a little?
Okay, so we're clear on that. All right, ING, consideration to form a new ad hoc committee on referendum for alternative consolidation plan. I know this is something that was brought up at operations. And based on the way the motion that the board has passed, I think it's prudent that we do it. My take on it is that we need a couple of board members, a couple of administration members. I think it would also be prudent to have a couple of staff, that going staff members, and add a couple of community members on it. Because we did indicate that it was something that we wanted the commu-, the communities feedback on, and I think by having a couple of community members on it, yeah, what else?
There's other ways to get community feedback, that, that put community members on this committee. And just the, the listening sessions we had, we get a broader range of input by having a couple of community members, just a couple of community members on the committee.
What would be a good criteria for selecting community members? 'Cause I imagine, I can imagine some individuals whom I clamor for, and I personally may not want, you know, on that committee, I'm just a speaker.
I think if I was looking at community members to have on it, it would be people that can be objective, and that can sit down in a room and have a discussion with you without screaming at you. And just somebody that can be open-minded about things, and look at the big picture rather than their own focus.
So you think if we had community members on it like that, do you think some of those people that like to make noise would maybe say we picked them deliberately anyway, or...
There's always that possibility, yes.
Well, I would, I would want a positive view, but I think I agree with Amy that you're gonna get a better feedback if you possibly survey a wider region. What are we talking about here, two community members?
Maybe we do both.
What happens if you put the whole board on the committee, can we do that? Is there anything stopping us?
No.
No, but, and I say but, because then it will be perceived that the board is trying to railroad something about everybody's story. Whereas if you don't have the entire board involved in it, you've got a very group, you're getting input from multiple sources.
Mike, what if we did the listening? Like Andy's talking about the listening, took the sessions, then the board comes together with open meeting, obviously, and discuss what was just talked about at that listening session. I don't know, just a suggestion.
We have to make the listening session slightly shorter.
Well, I mean, the same time.
You mean we'd have to set up something...
Yeah, no, I agree, you only have a listening session for an hour, and then the board... Yeah, that would be interesting, 'cause all the times we listen, and we never really...
That's right.
Well, we did set up, they had us at time, we just didn't adhere to it. I mean, we said it would be from this time to this time, and we allowed it to go on. So we would have to actually adhere to what we said.
Well, and maybe we, like, with public comment, it's five minutes you get, and that's it for those. So we can hear everybody's opinion.
Well, you can get five minutes, but then when everybody has had an opportunity to speak, if there's time left, you can...
Talk.
Readdress the group.
And I think that's what's important, because when you can talk and collaborate together, and have your emotions, you know, keep them at bay, you can, you can be more productive.
I just thought it was weird at the last ad hoc meeting, at the last one, that only three people got to vote, you know, but whether it was going to get to refer to the committee for everybody else to... You know, we were all there, but we couldn't vote, you know, like that very much.
There's some big decisions to be made, and I think I, I would like to have the whole board discuss.
That seems reasonable, on something of this...
I think certainly we have staff on the committee, right, in front of that.
Would, would the, you know, in terms of parameters for a committee? I mean, maybe some sort of parameter about, maybe someone from, you know, each of the affected schools, for example, which would be all the schools. I mean, maybe that'd be too many people, but that might be a thought, or...
That would be eight, eight people?
It would be, it may not be that we'll all make it all to them. Or one from the city and three from the country, perhaps, or...
Just having Ben on the committee, you know, I'm not saying I wanna limit it to two board members, but I think it is really important that everybody is kind of in the meeting all the time on the discussion. And I, I don't see that being a problem with board members here, that's not what I'm saying.
So you, you would favor having less board members on the ad hoc, but obviously, we kinda...
No, I, I would favor having whoever on the committee show up to all the meetings.
To the meetings, that seems reasonable.
Did you not show up?
No, I showed up, I, I was on the committee, but I showed up, I think to a fair amount of those.
I think you showed up to pretty much all of them, yeah.
Me. But I think that's a fair point.
I think a bigger discussion might be, what's the purpose of this ad hoc committee? Is it just that Plan B thing that we're discussing? Is it operational budget? Because I think we need an operational budget, no matter what we do. I think we need, theoretically, there's two operational budgets. If you're gonna keep all the, to keep some of the rural schools open, that operational budget is bigger than the one for Plan A would be.
And also, whether or not we wanna run a referendum in September or November.
Those can be too tight.
I think we're too tight for November, I think we took a couple months off here, so we went, run one in November.
Can we answer that question, what is the purpose of? Can we answer that now?
I think you...
I think it's a great ad hoc committee, you need to establish it now.
Something like to create a...
An alternative...
Pick a referendum, that would be an alternative facility plan, if it passed. Somebody got better wording.
Or a... Does it have to include...
Could it just be a committee to consider possible referendums, theory?
An operational...
A committee to determine alternative plan to the current consolidation.
Ad hoc committee to consider possible referenda and the creation of an alternate consolidation plan.
Yeah, seems pretty... That seems pretty good.
One of those plans was to leave all the schools open, would that be then not a consolidation plan?
It's not a consolidation plan. The board's motion said they were willing to consider a possible referendum for an alternate consolidation plan. Not a referendum to keep all schools open.
Yeah, I just worry a little bit that we should be looking at an operational referendum to support Plan A, because, you know, in a couple months there, we're gonna know what the state's gonna do as far as passing a budget, and the federal, and...
But what, the way I worded that, an ad hoc committee to consider referenda and the creation of a possible...
Yes, that would include... Referenda, you're not naming the referendum.
If you think that includes that, I'm good.
That's up to you guys, if you think...
When I read, when I read that, that's not what I thought, Brian, but if we have an understanding that that's what includes...
Say that sentence again, so I can read it briefly.
I would read that would include anything that pertains to a referendum.
Okay, you have to read that again.
Creation of an ad hoc committee to consider, hey, I don't even remember anymore. Yeah, I didn't type it out.
It was good.
Ad hoc committee to consider possible referenda, and... And an alternative consolidation plan.
As, as an alternative, yeah.
As an option.
Should there be an and or in there?
Open that as, because what he's saying is he'd like to consider a referendum, a referendum that may not be related to alternate consolidation plan.
And would you consider, like, let's say someone wanted to build a new school? Is that allowed under this discussion, is that...
That's alternative.
I'm not saying that that would ever pass, I'm just saying, is that something that would be allowed?
That would be an alternative consolidation plan, yes.
Okay.
Bobby, can you read that, what you just said?
Can I summarize that? What you're discussing is to the creation of an ad hoc committee to consider possible referenda and the creation of an alternate consolidation plan, or the development of an alternate, an alternate consolidation plan. And to be clear, let the minutes reflect that they're discussing an operational referendum, referendum, and a possible referendum that would make the alternate consolidation plan possible. Correct?
Yes, that's good, thank you, that's good to have that clarification.
Would someone like to make that motion?
So, wait a second.
Okay, motion by Mr., I am second by Mr. Mary. Do you need further discussion on the motion?
Um, just, who's on the committee doesn't have to be determined here at the board meeting, doesn't...
We're just, we're just agreeing to form a committee.
When do we wanna meet?
Did you?
Well, that's form a committee person by law.
Yeah, it's up to the committee chairperson.
So, when do, wait, so when do you need to form the committee?
Yeah.
I mean, no offense, or...
We do it along with the instructional committee?
Or committee of the whole, thank you.
But then we have to meet actually, just then.
That's right.
I'd rather piggyback.
Oh, well, we're taking volunteers, I'll volunteer, did you, did you volunteer? Patrick, did you wanna volunteer?
You beat it, Chuck.
Oh, not just to be on the committee?
Oh, no, you're looking for volunteers for chair, right?
No.
No? To be on the committee, absolutely, I think all of us will. Thank you, guys.
We have to brace ourselves for the dress.
Track day tomorrow?
Yeah. Yes, track day.
Hopefully it won't be as windy as usual.
Okay, um, we do have a motion on the board.
It usually starts on Monday, so I'll probably...
So we should vote on that first. Bobby, uh... No, we don't need to do roll call, that's, we can just do straight votes, vote. All those in favor?
Hi, yes.
Those opposed? Motion carries. If anyone's a volunteer to serve as chairperson.
Amy, how about chair?
We gotta twist your arm.
Yeah, now what I would recommend then is you get together with Mr. Miss Bell, and set up a date to have the first meeting. Your turn.
Okay. Does anybody have stroke, though, I don't know whether it should be June or July?
I think we should get it going right away. I'd like to piggyback at other meetings like you guys used to, but you weren't in the board meetings. Well, you could start at our, your board.
We'll see, well, I'll tell you what, we'll see what we can do, but in the meantime, we'll let these two gentlemen get together and pick a date first. Okay, and then we'll work out the details from that one. Okay, on to the next one. Foster grandparent expense approval.
Mr. Pruntie, I'll say it's...
We've been waiting for you.
The foster grandparents' grants was discontinued. We've got a number of wonderful individuals working through the foster grandparent program. This year, we approved continuing to pay for their free lunch and their travel expenses. A few of them have inquired if we would continue to do this, and I think what, as an administrative team, we're recommending is that we grandfather in, foster grandfather in, the current foster grandparents, under those, those same criteria, that we'll reimburse travel and their lunch, but we'll be sunsetting the program with those individuals.
Does every school have one?
Just the elementaries, not...
Right, I mean, does every elementary school have one?
No, there's, I just added, there's about eight foster grandparents currently.
So which elementary does not have one?
East.
East.
What's the, what's the cost? I mean, what is that cost ratio?
Any idea?
Well, Cindy, do you know on the title what we're paying right now for, I mean, historically, we've...
We just chose the meals.
And the meals are, how much are they...
I wanna say I have probably, I wanna say five thousand, but that seems high.
Yeah. So our, our out-of-pocket total for all of them is less than five thousand dollars even?
I can't even mention that.
Sound about right?
I don't know what mileage wants to...
If you look on your, as part of the board packet, you'll see whenever you see FGP after one of the names, so if you look at your board bills, there'll be a name of a person, that'll say FGP, foster grandparent program mileage. And I would say on average, those numbers are between twenty-five and fifty dollars a month, is what we're spending for those foster grandparent mileage. So if we say it's four hundred dollars a month times nine, you know, something like that, that is the worst-case scenario, and then lunch prices, I suppose that we would, they would be paying an adult meal price. And Brian, if I remember correctly, and we can pull a board docs from last month, but I wanna say the meal prices are maybe three fifty. I think that's about right for an adult meal. And I don't know if all the foster grandparents eat...
Not all of them do it, that's why.
Yeah. June is in the K three sixty, or year three seventy. Three sixty? Okay, so, really, this is not an exorbitant expense. Staff lunch will be three seventy next year.
Sounds, that sounds good.
So then my question is, do we wanna let East hire someone if they want to, or no? Can we just go as is?
Hiring someone would be a much larger expense.
Oh, well, whatever they do, find someone.
These are people who volunteered to do this, and I think in the past, we've struggled to find more as well. So we're saying we're not considering the program infinitely, we're going to continue to provide this for those people who are underage. We don't have there, I see, there's something to change, anybody else that could care?
Consider it, you're right.
Kinda guy, they do, they do a great service to our schools right now.
They do.
Provide students.
Yeah.
Very inexpensive, I would say, yes.
Exactly, that's for sure.
I'm on retreat, and then I speak, so she can start.
Agreed.
So then, uh...
So they allow you to pay your way, do they? You wanna volunteer, or what?
I, I hear you, I'm gonna ask for motion, I would continue. Okay, and we will do that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve continuance of the foster grandparent expense. Should that motion include the sunset provision?
For those currently working, the gross income.
But no other new ones can come in, is that...
They can come in, but they're not gonna get the, they're not gonna get the mileage and much.
Any other discussion on?
I will stay in the office, yeah.
That's all right, Bobby, let's do roll call.
Who has a second?
Uh, Danny.
Okay, Danny Payet?
Yes.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long? Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, everyone. Adam I, Tableau.
Tableau is a data analysis software and partners with Infinite Campus. One of the things we ask our teachers to do is look at data and identifying students who may be exceeding expectations, not meeting expectations, so we can provide interventions for those students. Right now, what we're doing is creating individual spreadsheets. So staff members are going in, they're looking at test scores, they're entering them into a spreadsheet, they're then pulling information from another test that we do. What Tableau can do is pull all of the information we enter into Infinite Campus and help us provide, help provide visualizations for our staff members of where our students are at. Some of the cool things it can do is set trend lines and, um, you know, plot the students on those trend lines, and you can select a group of students, and it will bring up the names of those students and give you their scores. So if you see a group that's way below the trend line, we can highlight those students and pull them up. It's actually a very powerful tool, and what I'll tell you is in the initial years, we'll probably use it on a fairly low level. But the goal is to start putting, we want our teachers to be discussing data. We want them to be discussing real-time data. And what we're finding is, in having to create these spreadsheets, they're looking at data that's six to eight weeks old, and then trying to make decisions on what interventions to provide students. So it'd be essentially if, you know, as a doctor, if you're trying to treat a student or treat a patient with months-old data constantly, rather than having up-to-date labs, those sorts of things. So our, our goal here is we looked at a number of different companies. What we really like to look Tableau is it fits right in with Infinite Campus, which is our data management software, so it's not something new for our staff members. It fits right in there.
Is it from that same company? Did you say?
It's not from the same company. They partner together. So these visualizations would actually go through to Campus. What we would have is what they essentially call creators. They'd be like super users. We were going to start off with fifteen super user licenses, probably mostly administrators, who will create these visualizations and then can push them out to staff members. And I can set it up so JD only sees his students. Manny only sees his students. Or if we're the math team, we can see all of the students in algebra and how they're performing. So we can compare, um, you know, I've talked before, JD and I both teach algebra, and we give a test. We can look and see, how did JD's students do? How did my students do? And it's not to say I did a lesser job teaching. Maybe my students don't do as well. I can say, JD, how did you teach that unit? What did you do differently than I did that can help me the next time around? Or your students are consistently performing higher, you're clearly doing a good job. Could you work with some of my lower-level students to help catch them up?
Is yours, is there like, so is the specialized data or the free introduced lunch data in Infinite Campus, so you could sort your charts by that versus below-grade level, average level, above?
Absolutely. You can see that. The possibility is the way you can do it are really kind of infinite. You can also set it to do things like, give me a list of any student who has more than five absences and is failing or, and missing ten assignments. And it will send users emails. So right now, Anita and Heather spend a lot of their time going through Infinite Campus to look at absences and look at grades, to pull those students and pull them in and consult with them. Amy and Tom do as well. This would, they could set it up and say, each day, I want a list of kids with ten or more missing assignments and with five absences. Or I want a list of students who have five missing assignments and are failing one or more classes. And it's going to give them that list. It can also get that list out to teachers. So it, you know, I could probably talk for hours on the different things it can do. The initial cost, it, it does cost, uh, we have a setup fee. We've been planning on going with either Tableau or a number of other products. We did look at three different possibilities all year, so the money's kind of been there. It's just really taken us to this point to finally settle on Tableau and I think one of the big decisions is we, we like the visualizations there, but I think one of the the big draws was, it fits right in with Infinite Campus. And we're already asking our teachers to enter information in Infinite Campus. Our attendance data is already in Infinite Campus. So why create another program for our staff member status? So what we're asking is for your approval to, um, go ahead with the purchase of Tableau for the seventeen, eighteen school year. And what you'll see there is the future cost will be, um, closer to three to four thousand dollars as opposed to this initial fifteen thousand dollar startup fee. The startup fee does help us with implementation management, some training, and some design work in helping us pick out the, the visualizations that we like and want to start with.
Which one are you going to use at Bloomer?
Bloomer uses a program called Edge Climber. Similar program. Uh, we looked at Edge Climber as well. Again, what, you know, for, for me, the big decision was, especially at the elementary level, we're just getting started using Infinite Campus. And we absolutely need our staff members entering information in Infinite Campus because that's what the state pulls for recording. And I was really worried that if I am a teacher who's just starting to use Infinite Campus, and now you're asking me to use Edge Climber, and I'm entering information in Edge Climber, it's going to be a hard sell to get me to do it in campus as well. Whereas this is all in one, um, one package. It's just right there. So as they're entering in Infinite Campus, th- those visualizations are right there. Edge Climber also pulls from Infinite Campus, but it's a different platform. I'll be honest, one of the draws for Edge Climber was it, it looked a little more user-friendly and neat colors and, you know, that kind of stuff on the dashboard. But it was a worry of mine that it'd be a hard sell as teachers were beginning entering information in Edge Climber, to get them to go back and do it in campus, which is really the right way. It should be entering campus and then pulled into
Right.
these other platforms.
Be looking for a motion then, please.
I'm with the board who the service agreement goes CIC, the Tableau initial setup and first year subscription fee of fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Long. Any questions? Because I believe it was very thoroughly.
Brian, on the bottom there, in the notes, it says hardware for Tableau desktop. Tableau server is additional. Is that all included in that fifteen thousand? See what it says?
That would be any hardware, additional hardware we need. I don't think we'll need it. Tableau server annual license, that's if we want to store it on their server. If we do, you know, we have to talk with Mark on that. I think we probably have server space to host it, but if not, you know, we may bet on some of those services. What we're asking for now is just the, the initial fee to start working with them.
And, um, the reimbursable travel expense, is that included in there too?
Most of the training, we expect to be virtual.
Okay.
The travel expenses are not included in there. If we did want them to come onsite, we'd have to pay for the travel expenses. Um, but the way they have described the professional development to, to us, most of it will just be, um, online.
Virtual?
Yep, virtual, so.
And there's no cost in that?
No cost in that. That's included, yep.
Any other questions?
I'd like the superintendent to be able to look at that and see if it's data for everyone.
Superintendent, you know, we, we can set different levels of permissions. So superintendent will have district-wide permission to view all the data and can pull in a number of different views. A teacher, we may not give complete district-wide data because of student privacy rights, but we give you access to all of your students. Maybe the student's in your grade level. We can give, like I said, collaborative teams when they're sitting down and the algebra teachers are talking about the test they just gave. We can give rights to the algebra teachers to see all students in algebra.
So it's not just fifteen licenses. It's a license for every teacher?
Fifteen creator licenses. So the creators are the ones who select the reports we want our teachers to view, and then we can push them out to any of the teachers.
I see.
That is enough?
I think so to start with. In fact, they kind of recommended that you start small. And as people become familiar with it, you expand. And that would, you know, easily enough, if I'm a math teacher, I could go to Tom and say, hey, we had our team meeting, and we'd really like to see this. Tom can go in, make some adjustments to current things, and send it back out to them. You can also give them certain rights to adjust things. So for example, if I'm only looking, if I only have rights to view my class, Tom can also give me rights to sort my class by males and females, by students with disabilities. So it's not just, it's not a PDF snapshot. It's a live form that he's given me permission to view that I can work through. As our staff becomes more comfortable with it, we may come back and say we want to expand this to unlimited licenses, which is
Well, yeah, you can see that.
A slightly larger fee, but as our staff members become more comfortable, we may want to do that. So right now, what I'm envisioning is each elementary principal would probably have one of the licenses. We probably have three at the high school, three at the middle school, a couple at central office for our coaches and district administrators to use.
Since we share principals.
Yeah.
I think it's a great plan.
Um, it's really, it's, it's overdue at this point. We, we've now got our staff members to the point that they're really asking for something like this, which is kind of nice. It's a little easier sell when they want it, rather than us saying you have to use this. But we finally hit that point where we have collaborative teams saying, we're looking at data, but the data we're looking at is always two months old because it takes us time to compile it.
Anyone else? Bobby, let's do roll call, both of us, please.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes. And I'm sure once up and running, Cindy, Tom, Amy will come in, do a demo for you guys and show you what, what we purchased and how it's being used.
They're going to give us extra cool monitoring reports and I would just say, great.
Well, that's the other thing, is it's going to save an enormous amount of time on monitoring reports, and you're probably going to get far more detailed monitoring reports. Yeah, so that'll be awesome.
Exactly. Wonderful. Artie, web hosting service?
We are, Mark Kautza came to us and asked that we consider possibly changing our web hosting service. Um, he had Trevor Baseman, who is our, our, um, web manager, kind of looking into a number of different pro, um, programs, and what they found is a lot of schools are using CMS for schools. The cost is, the yearly price is going to be about half of what we currently pay. They also feel that the new platform is going to be much more responsive and much easier for Trevor to manipulate, get up-to-date information on there. You know, the downside is we will have to pay an activation fee to get going. Uh, but they did include a few links to some other districts that are using it, and you can see kind of what their webpages look like. As you go through a few, I, I visit a lot of school districts' webpages just for different information to see what they're doing, and it seems like by far the most popular platform that's out there. A, a lot of districts are using it, and you'll see that each website looks slightly different, but they do have a kind of a general feel to them. So, um, in the long run, the, the cost saving is going to pay itself off, but we do have that initial setup fee that, which is why we'd be asking for board approval on this. But it's going to cost us less, and it's, you know, going to be much easier for our staff to manage. One of the comments they have on there is control of website content, and it says currently we don't have total control of our site. What that means is when Trevor wants to make a change, he sends it to someone else. May that have to change our website. There's latency. And sometimes the latency's been as much as two, three days. Whereas with this, Trevor's in full control, he wants it up. It's up just as fast as we put up our, our Facebook posts.
Okay, just to settle with our current website, we've got teachers still listed that are in order to avoid with this district.
Yes, we've also asked them to ensure that there will be no downtime with the website. So essentially what will happen is the current website will stay up till this one's ready to go up. We'll tell them a day to switch over, it'll switch over. So the only thing, you know, in a day, something, the new one will be up and we'll never have downtime. They also feel they can have it fully operational by the start of next school year.
How many people move on our website a year?
I can ask Trevor to get us that data.
Just curious.
Uh, I'll, I'll ask him for that information.
It's not, I, I think it really needs to be updated. You know, I don't want to say as frequently as Facebook, but
More often.
Oh, definitely. I mean, we have the same features on there for far too long, and you lose interest in it, and then you're like, why go there? Because nothing's updated, never lose a large audience.
I think one of the other things that's cool, this will allow for better integration with Facebook. Uh, it'll make our Facebook more visible on the webpage. We've also discussed for a number of years, and I think this will make it more possible, is in the future possibly looking at, uh, you know, data shows us that people use their phones. This has a much better mobile platform, first of all, but also in the future could possibility have the opportunity of us creating an app with a lot of our information on there. So, um, a lot of benefits to it. I don't think there's much downside other than that initial implementation fee.
So at this point, we'd be looking for a motion to switch our web host vendor from West Education Group to CMS for schools. And initial setup cost to twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion from Mrs. Long, second from Dr. McInnes, to switch over to CMS for schools. Any additional discussion?
Mike, the only piece that I'd like to add is, um, we applied for round one Teach Infrastructure Grant. We reimburse, um, the technology pieces that Mark put in place, um, through E-Rate. And we paid, um, on E-Rate projects this year, we E-Rate paid for eighty percent of the funding of the projects. And we made twenty percent. The infrastructure grant from Teach, we got a twenty-two thousand dollar rebate, and Mark is using, um, that Teach grant to, um, if we move forward, to go ahead and pay the implementation fee for the web hosting.
So, in text that we've already got flagged here to do it. Thank you, Tim. Awesome. Any other discussion? Bobby?
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Okay, up next, uh, Milkkins.
I move the board approve Milkkins from Dean Foods slash Morning Glory Dairy, as presented.
Motion from Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Mead. And we only received one bit on the bit, so pretty much self-expanding. That is, just to make sure everybody's up to speed on it. For four hundred and fifteen thousand, a half-bites of milk in half-bites disposable containers. Grade A one percent white, twenty-three cents grade A skin white, twenty-two point eight cents, grade A skin chocolate, point two four five cents. Twelve-ounce bottles, uh, grade A skin white, seven B eight point four, seventy, or, point seventy zero five cents, and the same for grade A skin chocolate. And additional dairy items, uh, five pounds of yogurt for six dollars fifteen point three one cents, or five pounds cottage cheese for nine points six one eight eight. And that is the entire deal of the bit, so just seeing what you're holding there, folks. Any other questions?
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, NML, support staff and custodial compensation.
I'm asking that the board approve a, um, increase of one point five percent, a salary increase of one point five percent for our support staff and custodial staff. We've been, this is the amount we've been talking about over the last few months, is we've been looking at administrative teacher salary increases. It's the same increase our administrative team got, and, um, as you know, the, the teaching staff was a little off this year because we implemented a new compensation plan. We have met with the, with representatives from each of these groups just to talk it over, and, um, I think in both cases, they feel it's, it's fair, so.
Mike, I need to let the record reflect that I have recused myself of this conflict of interest. Discussion and voting. Very good. Thank you, Danny. Okay, so much.
I didn't want to make a motion. I wanted to ask how much it costs.
Sorry, I'll make a motion then. Uh, I move that we, um, approve an increase of one point five percent salary for support staff and custodial staff.
Motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Long.
I'll answer your question, JD. It's really hard to tell, um, what the overall cost increases for us because, and Tim can probably explain this better than I do, but basically all of our salaries get grouped into the same line item. Um, so, Tim, I don't know if you can provide any clarification there?
So Tim, I don't know if you can provide any clarification there, but.
I can have it for Fridays, for you in one Friday.
Okay. We group them all together, so when we're talking increases, administrative, teachers, support staff, we're all kind of grouped in there, so to pull out the different groups and what each group, the increase would be, is hard to say. It's pretty safe to say that this would be the smallest increase of the three groups. Just based on current salary or current wages as they are?
Any other questions? Bobby, let's do a roll call.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Recuse.
Oh, I'm sorry. Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yep.
Eleven.
Okay, thank you, everybody. New hires, be looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve the hiring of the following for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year, Chris Kohler, second grade teacher at Crestwood, Jason Leist, middle school English, language arts, and Megan Mortensen, math teacher at the high school.
Can that be pending paperwork? Some might don't have all the documentation.
Pending paperwork that.
Pre-hire paperwork, yep.
Say that fast. Okay. All righty, motion by Danny Pyatt, second by Andy Mary, so. Any question on the hirings? Pending proper paperwork.
What's, what's happening with, looking at the resignations, there, the egg teacher is gone, have we rehired somebody for that position?
Internal transfer.
We have an internal transfer. Shalindamki, who's currently a second grade teacher at.
First grade.
First grade? First grade teacher at Pleasant View. I think we had a couple candidates actually, conducted interviews and felt that she was a great candidate, so she is going through the experiential learning licensure program. So I believe Tina and Tom are working with API just to figure out what she needs to do to get that licensure, and then will be back to her position at Pleasant View. For the reason it's not here for approval, she's already under contract with the district.
Okay. Okay, what about the new principal?
In process. We'll be doing some second interviews this week, so hopefully have something finalized by, hopefully the end of the week.
And then I'll just throw in on that, because this seems like an appropriate thing, is that Cece and I are starting on an alternative relationship program, which I don't know that she would qualify it, because they're only doing limited things this year.
Right now, I think it's math and English, and then it'll expand.
It'll expand, yeah.
In her case, because she grew up on a farm and has worked on farms, you remember a few years back, they passed some, I don't even know if a few years, I think it was a year or two ago, passed some state legislature that said if you did have relevant work experience in your past, you could get licensed in certain areas, and that was an area I, if, yeah, in this case, we have a teacher who's a licensed teacher who has that experience, so we'll be able to, I think it's basically some paperwork that we have to work through to get her licensed. But in the meantime, she's going to do some visitations here at the high school, I believe she may have already done that, and will be working with the current egg teacher over the summer to start to get a feel for the position.
She's always active, and she's involved in a couple of tours.
It's a good hire for us.
Any other discussion on the motion? She's great. Bobby.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Okay, item added, resignations.
I move the board accept the resignation as follows. Julie Hilli, East Elementary Administrative Assistant, effective June thirty, twenty-seventeen. Adam Cone, Egg Science Teacher, effective June thirty, twenty-seventeen. Josh Krieger, Tech Ed Teacher, effective June thirty, twenty-seventeen. And Charmaine Schultz, Middle School Housekeeper, effective May five, twenty-seventeen.
Second. Okay, we have motion from Mr. Pyatt, second from Mr. Mary. Any discussion on the resignations?
Where we added placing Julie, because someone's got big shoes to fill.
That's right. They have some huge shoes for Julie.
They did interviews today. So we got a good candidate that I'm working on. Close.
I did not see a resignation letter from Mr. Krieger.
Just came in, we'll get it out to you. It came in this afternoon, so we wanted to just get him on here so we can go forward. I'll actually get it out to you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Julie.
Yeah, thank you.
If we say no, are you gonna go anywhere?
What's that?
If we say no, are you gonna leave that anyway?
Do we make certain?
Do we, do we may have a problem with that?
You should make a condition on whether or not you get those flush toilets.
I know, they're not flushed yet because they're on the island, so.
Let's jump back onto this, folks, we, I sidetracked, this is my apologies.
Sorry.
Any further discussion on the resignations?
Board meetings are gonna be a lot more lonely.
They are. Committee meetings always works better.
All those in favor? Hi. Those opposed? Motion carries. Julie, since you're the only one here, thank you. Appreciate what you've done for the district over the years, you will be missed.
Can I just say a little side note about Julie?
I'll give you two seconds.
Well, maybe more than two. Obviously, I am in the building a lot on Saturdays and Sundays, and Julie is there a lot, even on the weekends, and she does a lot of extra work. So thank you for all the extra work that you've put into it.
Thank you, JD, that was nice.
Okay. Now, item O, donations. Motion, please.
I move board accept the donations as follows. Two hundred dollars absolute realty for Drama Playville, one hundred dollars AmeriGas for Drama Department, one thousand dollars Johnson electric coil for Odyssey of the Mind, five hundred dollars bomb for Odyssey of the Mind, five hundred dollars Northwoods Association Realtors for a Phil backpack program, two hundred and thirty-four dollars Walt's Fargo Community Support Campaign for the Swim Club, and seven hundred dollar Brown Woodland Foundation Fund for the Quacks.
Motion from Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Yuska.
What is the food service angel?
Essentially, it's an account that we're using like, for students that are in need, they come forward and ask.
Cool.
There's one other donation that didn't make, but we got it today, and I just wanna bring it to the board's attention. We have a crossing guard that gave a donation to the partners program. And I believe the donation was for fifty dollars for just the end of the year party. And it was, Bobby Rosier, maybe is the name of the crossing guard?
The one in seven.
And I just thought that was a very generous gift.
It is.
Someone that appears to have minor means. And it didn't make the hundred dollar criteria, so I just thought it's a very nice gift.
Yes, thank you.
There was one that was on the sheet that wasn't part of the motion, but it's dated from April the sixth from Hydratite Sweeney for twenty-five hundred dollars for the swim club and special.
Yeah, that's a donation that they do on behalf of the swim club. And we actually received it in on their behalf, and the swim club is an activity that runs out in the animal foundations, so we then turn, go ahead and turn the money over. Whatever, their home company out of Milwaukee wants it to be received in by the district and not necessarily by the swim club, so it's just a transfer, but it's an offer and estimation.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that we're listening.
Thank you.
Forget Hydratite.
Yep. It was that. Old eagle?
Yeah, like, I love the word there.
All righty.
But they donate a lot of stuff.
Any other questions on the donations or plans?
Who's Broad Woodland Foundation? You know, I, they donate a lot to the UW-Madison Scholarship, three thousand dollars or something, and I just didn't know how they were connected to the community.
Fred Brown used to own the, so he just bought up all this woodland back in the seventies. So he owns a huge amount of woodland. While his kid's on it now.
Do we get, do we get a lot donated for that Phil backpack for the weekend?
We do get a lot of the community support and some internal funding that we put forward to that program because we know the need is so high.
The need is high, I mean, there's a little guy that, that I pick up that every week, he tells me this is the food that he gets on the weekend.
So he is getting it.
Seems like early in the year, a lot of those donations come in.
All righty. Any other questions on the donations or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor are accepting. We say hi. Hi, those opposed? Good. And that concludes the majority of the portion of business tonight, and we would now be looking for a motion to adjourn in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five to Ram C and E, considering employment of any public employee of which the government allows, he has jurisdiction or exercises responsibilities, specifically can appreciate contract terms from the new district administrator. So move. Andy, was that you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Pyatt, second by Ms. Yuska. Bobby, let's do a roll call.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
We are officially enclosed. Thank you all for being here tonight.